Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a League of Women Voters ABC Forum for candidates running for Ramsey Mayor and City Council. Thank you to the Candidates, Ramsey Municipal Center, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID spread. This has been an election year like no other. And now, let me remove my mask to better enable you, the audience, and the candidates to understand me. I'm Wes Falkinett, member of the Anoka-Blaine Coon Rapids area League of Women Voters and a resident of neighboring Andover. I do not have a vote for the Ramsey City Council. The League sponsors this forum along with its co-sponsors, the North Suburban Optimists Club and the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. Each of the Candidates for the Council-at-Large seat were invited to this forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. That's what this forum is all about, informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage at l w v a b c m n dot org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. Now, in the 2020 election, Ramsey residents will elect a mayor, one city council member at-large, and council members for wards two and four. An at-large council seat is currently held by Jeff Meth. The at-large seat Candidates tonight are Jeff Meth and Chelsea Howell. The Candidates will answer three introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters, North Suburban Optimists Club, and Metro North Chamber of Commerce. We will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to one minute. Candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. So, let's get started with our first introductory question, and on the flip of picking a number, Chelsea Howell won that toss, and I will start with her with the first introductory question. So Chelsea, please describe your background and community involvement.
Thank you, Wes. First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum this evening. Thank you also to the residents who are listening in at home tonight. My name is Chelsea Howell. My husband Brett and I moved to Ramsey 12 years ago. We moved here because we fell in love with the urban rural feel of the community, the large lot sizes, and low property taxes. As the parents of two young children, we have a vested interest in our community. I, as a far more small business owner with a background in teaching, I operated my own music studio for 17 years with hundreds of families, addressing their unique goals while working with a number of learning styles. I've also worked in the food industry and respect the skill and dedication it takes to be successful. I believe my skills in communication and unique background will be an asset to our community. I've been a volunteer at our church and also done advocacy for Silverth.
Thank you. And Jeff, your turn, please describe your background and community involvement.
Thank you, Wes, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing this opportunity. During COVID, it's very tough, door knocking, getting out, so I appreciate this. I'm Jeff Meth, I am currently your council member at-large. I have lived in Ramsey for 27 years, and I've been married to my wife Betsy for 33 years. I'm an electrician, I'm a retired electrician, and I spent 40 years in the trade. I went to Anoka Tech, it's right on the border of Ramsey, and it served me very well. We have one son, he's in college, doing well, he went to public school, and I was a member of the Ramsey Shademakers. We planted hundreds of trees around Ramsey.
Thank you. Jeff, you get the next question, and again, it's the second introductory question. Why are you seeking this office?
To get things done. The first thing we did on council was we passed the franchise fee. It's a stable, secure way to fund our roads in Ramsey. They've kicked that can down the road for years and years, so now, we're going to be collecting money every month, it goes into a franchise fee, and one year, we will collect that money, start fixing the roads, rather than bonding, to get things done. We have a public works building that's being worked on, being worked through the process. Our public works folks have three tin sheds that are 40 years old, and they've been working out of those sheds for a long time. The office is a used mobile home that's about 30 years old. We also have three alternate sites where we store trucks and equipment and tools. This is highly inefficient. It's been on the works since 2006 to build this public works facility, let's get it done. We have a water treatment problem, we have manganese in our water. We're being required to fix that.
Thank you. Time is up. Chelsea, again, why are you seeking this office?
In late spring of this year, I became very concerned about members of our community who were not allowed to work because of the shutdown. I wanted to see what I could do to advocate for them. Some of them just didn't feel comfortable coming in and speaking up, I wanted to be a voice for them. I would like to be as a resident in Ramsey and a taxpayer, I would like to be the person to give back to the community and be a voice for small business owners and residents. I oppose the franchise fee, I don't think right now, when people are losing jobs and businesses can't operate as usual, that it's wise to place the tax on residents.
Thank you. And then, we'll continue with Ms. Howell on the third question of our introductory. What are your goals for the city of Ramsey's future?
So my goals will be ensuring that the residents and the small business owners feel like they are the ones giving direction to the city council and leading the city in the direction they'd like it to go. I would again like to represent them on the city council. I would like to see that Ramsey remains a community where our taxes stay low, that we support our police and fire departments, and we keep our community safe.
Thank you. And Mr. Meth, what are your goals for the city of Ramsey's future?
Thank you, Wes. If I had to pick one goal, I would say it's transportation. I'll give you an example, in 1956, President Eisenhower passed the Interstate Highway Bill. We built interstates all through this country, we became the powerhouse of the world, nobody could compete with us. In Ramsey, in Anoka County, our roads are plugged, they're choked off. When businesses come to town and they're thinking about enlarging or building here because we have the land, they see the traffic jams. So we need to stay on that gateway project to take the stoplights off of Highway 10 at Ramsey and Sunfish Lake Boulevard, and that's one of the biggest things we have to take care of. We're doing other things in Ramsey, taking care of the water, like I mentioned, and like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move into questions you haven't seen. The first two come from our co-sponsor, the Chamber of Commerce, business-related questions. Mr. Meth, your question, please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as special advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Thank you, Wes. My experience with the small business is, since I retired as an electrician, I became a landlord again. I own rental property, not in Ramsey, I have no financial interest in Ramsey. But I belong to the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association, they taught me how to be a landlord again because I had stopped doing that in my 30s. They also have hotlines for renters, when you have questions about the legalities of whatever's going on, they take care of that, they answer those questions. So as we build rental property and apartment buildings and such here in Ramsey, I have a background in this, and so, it isn't new to me.
Thank you. And Ms. Howell, same question to you. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as special advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Thank you. Yeah, so again, I was a small business owner for 17 years, I had a music studio, so I do have experience in owning a business. I understand that often, we run on small profit margins, business owners are the ones who get paid last. I also have worked in the food industry, I had a small chocolate shop that I ran for a short while, and I understand basically what, you know, the restaurant people put a lot into their work, they have low profit margins, and we really need to support them right now. On May 26, I spoke up at the city council meeting on behalf of small business owners in our area and the things that they were going through, I would like to advocate going forward again with COVID going on and the shutdown, just be an advocate for those businesses and be speaking with them continually about their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. This question will go to Ms. Howell. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
Thank you. So yes, one of the things that I think that we could do as a community is deregulate our businesses, I think that they're overregulated, that's just something we can look into. Those who have the experience, those who could talk to that would be the businesses, the local businesses themselves. One thing that I would note is that, in speaking with cities around us in our area, and then speaking with Ramsey as well, when a new business comes to the area, their money for landscaping is tied up here for about two years. We could go over to Elk River, once your landscaping is put in place, that money is no longer tied up. If we, you know, take care of things like that here in Ramsey, that's just an example, those businesses can take that money and reinvest it in the community and grow our tax base.
Thank you. And Mr. Meth, same question. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
As we've mentioned earlier, roads and transportation. Businesses need to be able to get their product in and out. We are working on those issues, and we're moving forward with it, we aren't just talking about it. We're taking care of the gateway project and our city roads. Our employers need employees, they all tell us this, not everyone, when you grew up in Ramsey, you grew up in a one-acre lot with your house with mom and dad, when you first move out of home, you can't afford a one-acre lot with a house. 20 years ago, Ramsey had no other options. That's why in the Corps, they're building other options, townhomes, apartments, so that other peoples, you know, can live here and work in Ramsey, they need employees. That's what we hear from them. They're getting served very well by our fire department and our police, and that's what I think we need help doing.
Thank you. Next question, this is a little bit longer, so I'll read it if need be. As a council member, you're going to have issues that divide the community, such as the recent divide over the impact of mask mandates on area businesses. Jeff, with your contractor, landlord, and electrician background, and Chelsea, with your teaching gourmet foods and chocolatier background, what have you learned about decision-making when faced with two very different competing forces over an issue? And this one goes to Jeff, and then to Chelsea.
Thank you. That is a very divisive issue, and here's the deal. I'm an electrician, when I, when my teeth hurt, I go to see a dentist, when my body hurts, I go to see a doctor. That's why I'm saying, talk to the experts, listen to the experts, whatever it is they're telling us about this COVID, this is a worldwide pandemic. That's what I think we have to follow right there, and I apologize, Wes, is there more question there?
If you have time, it was, how do you deal with two very different competing forces over an issue?
Okay, thank you. We listened to everybody, we listened in this room to everybody, just two, a week ago, the entire council changed their opinion on a small piece of a development because we listened to the public that showed up and voiced their concern about that piece of that development, and they changed all of our mind, and we changed the direction for that developer. We listen to people, we don't just listen to the loudest voice in the room, you have to listen to all the people, so.
Thank you. Chelsea, I'll give you kind of an abbreviated of all of that, and that is, there are issues that divide the community. What have you learned about decision-making when faced with two very different competing forces over an issue, and of course, the mask mandate was a example of that?
Yes, I think that's a great example, I'm very thankful you brought that up. So our country was founded upon the principle that all are created equal, that is why I spoke in favor of the last section of Resolution 2163, showing values of kindness and respect in unprecedented times. I believe that we have always been a country that respects people with disabilities and with health issues, and that they are the ones who are best to manage those, that is why I spoke in favor of that, I think we need to be respectful of everybody in our community. I think that we're good at that as a community, and so I don't really see something as the mask mandate, that, you know, just supporting that aspect of the resolution as being divisive. I just spoke with a resident who moved here from Africa, she's from Kenya actually, she loves our community, and she said that she comes here, learns about how we support people with disabilities, and takes that back home and implements that into her home country, so let's, let's keep up that great work.
Thank you. The next three questions are all related to each other, and they're around the important issue of roads, streets in Ramsey. Ms. Howell, you'll get the first of these three. Ramsey has passed a five-year franchise fee that takes effect in October as a stable funding source for road repair and management. Some have called for this to be rescinded. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee funding mechanism, and please explain why or why not?
Thank you. So on the surface, the franchise fee looks really great, for $14 a month, supposedly you will get your roads fixed. That is only going to generate $1.9 million, it's going to accumulate gradually, like Jeff said, we have about, it'll take a year to accumulate that much. However, there are 9,168 property tax IDs in Ramsey, and approximately 6,604 of them will be paying more in franchise fees than they would in additional property taxes. Also, an increase in the franchise fees can be voted without limit by any seated city council in the future. It was not prudent for city council members to place an open-ended tax on residents, I don't support it. I placed all the information on my website for more details, I would be happy to rescind the tax if I have the support of other council members.
Thank you. And Mr. Meth, I'll give you a truncated version of that. The franchise fee takes effect in October. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee funding mechanism, and please explain why or why not?
Thank you. I voted for the franchise fee, and so therefore, yes, I will support that in the future. It is true that any future council could increase or decrease that amount, but they would have to go through all of the same steps we went through last time, all the public meetings and that sort of thing, so it would be quite a, quite a leap to change that. It's a five-year sunset, in five years, if we don't like how it's going, we'll stop that. As far as the taxes, it was a tough call. You can raise property taxes, we were told by the Finance Department, 15%, or you can do a franchise fee, or we can do what other councils have done, nothing. Once again, I didn't get elected to do nothing. We're going to do something, and that was the direction that was laid out for me, to be the simplest and the most direct. If you have, just raise the taxes, they can use that money on anything. All of a sudden, it starts to fall out of little holes in the bottom of the bucket all over the place. I like the idea that the franchise fee was dedicated.
Thank you. Time was up. Second question related goes to Mr. Meth. Should the final decision on these types of funding choices be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion is received?
Great question. So, I believe we live in a democracy that is ruled by a republic. The concept is, they elect us to make those hard decisions. If we put every decision to do with money up to the public, we would be doing nothing but voting all the time. That's why we get elected, and if you don't like the way people vote, then you vote them out of office.
Thank you. And same question to Ms. Howell, which is, should the final decision on these types of funding choices be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion is received?
So, first I would like to say that, I'm just going to follow up, the franchise fee is not necessarily dedicated, it's not in a lockbox, and any future council can vote to redirect those funds, it's far more fluid than has been expressed by my opponent. As far as should it be voted on, should the voters have a say or not? The Charter Commission did try, they did try to bring it to a referendum, it was voted down unfortunately. I think the, the community, if we're going to introduce a different form of taxation, I definitely think the community should have a say, that's a huge, that's a huge issue. Or just going down a different route with a franchise fee than with a property tax or assessments. So I think in that, in that regard, I would support bringing it to a referendum, I guess that, that again would depend on what our charter says.
Thank you. And the last of these related road-type questions goes to Ms. Howell first. Both of you discuss road repair and management as a key issue at your respective websites. Please explain what you like or dislike, or what is sensible or not sensible about the city's road pavement plan and capital improvement plan that is scheduled through 2029.
Thank you. So with the capital improvement plan, I would point out that it's flexible and anything, and it can be adjusted at any time. I have been going through it, there's some things that I don't really think are, you know, high priority right now, when our roads are in such disrepair, putting $80,000 towards a park monument and a park sign, and $1.5 million into a brand-new park in the Corps doesn't seem terribly prudent to me, so I would just point that out. As far as going forward with roads, I think that we need to get our priorities in order. We should be funding as a community, police and fire in our roads before we start doing all these pet projects. So I would just support in reallocating funds within the budget and just making smarter choices for the residents, rather than raising taxes again when people are losing their jobs and they can't operate their businesses as needed.
Thank you. And Mr. Meth, I'll just do a part of that question. Please explain what you like or dislike, or what is sensible or not sensible about the city's road pavement plan and the capital improvement plan that is scheduled through 2029?
I've heard this before, they say, wasn't anybody watching this, didn't they plan for this? Well, the city has planned for this, they went out and surveyed every road in Ramsey to find out the condition it's in, and so they are working on this. That's what I like about the capital improvement plan. Do things change, move around? Yes, they do, of course they do. I'm not going to address the parks and that sort of thing, but we've known about these roads for a long time, and we're working on fixing them, it's the number-one thing in Ramsey. We have to have a capital improvement plan, everybody's household should have a capital improvement plan so you can see what's coming. That's called planning in advance. I never did this, we, this would be a great idea, so I like that concept.
Thank you. Mr. Meth, you get the question that was provided to us from our co-sponsors, the Optimists Club. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Ramsey, and how would you, as an elected official, help solve this issue?
The greatest issue for me?
What you see as the greatest issue for youth?
Okay, thank you. I think I touched on this, and it's transportation, it's transportation. We can't, everyone in this town tells us, when I door knock, we want shops and businesses and restaurants. In order to do that, we need more households, we need more rooftops. I built McDonald's restaurants for years and years, they were one of our clients, they have a formula, they know when you can put a restaurant someplace, and whether or not they're, it's going to make it. We're almost there, we're almost made enough rooftops and enough people to start bringing in these restaurants. We were going to be starting a hotel with a steak restaurant, except COVID put an end to it over here, right by Covert's. So it's in the works, that's what people want, and to do that, we need the roads, we need the access to Highway 10, we have the fire, we have the police, we have the administration, we're adding personnel here to help with the, we've had a huge influx of more building permits requests, so we're working towards those goals.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Howell. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Ramsey, and how would you, as an elected official, help solve this issue?
So I think that's twofold, I'm going to address further out and then come back to the immediate. As far as bringing in more businesses so that there's more opportunities for youth as far as places to work and entertainment venues and such, again, I think we can deregulate our businesses, speak to the people that have the experience in the community that have the businesses, ask what's preventing their businesses from growing and what they see as being, you know, difficult for other businesses feeling comfortable coming into the area. In the more immediate, I'd like to say that young adults and children crave social interaction, and with few opportunities due to COVID, young people are at a higher risk of depression. To that point, while I've been outdoor knocking, I've visited with residents who have chosen to fill this gap in their own neighborhoods by hosting outdoor movie nights and cookouts for neighborhood kids. The children in these neighborhoods seem close-knit, happy, and thriving. Neighbors are coming together and supporting one another. With limited social opportunities, this is a great way to bring the community together.
Thank you. Ms. Howell, post-COVID, how do you see the city leveling or reducing the tax burden on its residents?
So I think what we need to do is, we do need to go through the capital improvement plan and make adjustments. I anticipate that there are going to be more people losing their jobs if this continues, just realistically. We need to figure out how to tighten our belt as a city, and reduce our expenses, and focus on needs over our, yeah, needs over wants, as a community, as a service to the people who live here.
Thank you. And Mr. Meth, same question. Post-COVID, how do you see the city reducing or leveling the tax burden on its residents?
In the last year or so, we have leveled the tax, we haven't raised taxes, and that's been happening because of more residents, more households. That's the main thing that's been holding that down, and we have a lot of land left to develop here in Ramsey. Developers want to develop it, they come in front of the city council every month, and it's our job to hold them to the comprehensive plan, they always want to build higher density than is in the comprehensive plan. We all moved to Ramsey because of the space and the rural atmosphere. To keep that out there in the rural areas, we have to stick to the comp plan, only allow them to build what that says. The medium or higher-density housing has to be down here at the Corps, near City Hall, and that's how we will continue to grow, and we keep the taxes down by sheer numbers.
Thank you. Next question goes to Mr. Meth. Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi River from the Champlin-Dayton area into Ramsey, and what impact do you think that this would have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents headed to the southern Twin Cities areas?
That's, that's an interesting question. The last time I saw a plan on this, we've been hearing about this bridge to Dayton for a long time, I thought it was lined up with Armstrong Boulevard. If they were to do that, it's going to, the traffic coming in from Anoka is obviously going to be a lot less, and it puts us down into Dayton, down to 610, much quicker, that would be great. I understand talks are going on with Dayton right now, I don't know where they are because I'm not on that committee. That would be a wonderful thing, we've all sat in that traffic, myself, my 40-year career, waiting to go to work and waiting to come home, so I think it'd be a great thing.
And same question to Ms. Howell. Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi River from the Champlin-Dayton area into Ramsey, and what impact do you think this would have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents headed to the southern Twin Cities areas?
Well clearly, it would give us more access, easier ways to get out of Ramsey and elsewhere, so that would be great, sounds like something that I'd be happy to support. I haven't looked into it a lot, I would like to look into it further. And to follow up on Jeff's comments from earlier, I also do not support high-density housing.
Thank you. You get the next question. This actually has been slightly touched on this evening, you guys can anticipate questions. What do you see as the proper suburban rural balance in Ramsey, and what is the key aspect of development of the community that either touches you strongest, or that you foresee as the community's biggest challenge?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes.
Thank you.
What do you see as the proper suburban rural balance in Ramsey, and what is the key aspect of development of the community that either touches you strongest, or that you foresee as the community's biggest challenge?
So first of all, it's interesting to look at a map just of the entire city, and kind of look at the uniqueness of what we've got going here, which for Ramsey is the large lot sizes. I think that we should build upon that and take advantage of it, that's what attracts a lot of people to come to our community, so I would like to continue with that, and that's, I'll leave it there.
Okay. And Mr. Meth, same question, do you, do you want me to repeat that one?
Thank you, Wes, no. When I ran a year ago, what I told people out there when I was door knocking was, I would stand by the comprehensive plan, and we would build houses out in the rural area as it's in the comp plan. The minimum size is a quarter-acre lot, it's 80-foot-wide lots, that's what's in the comp plan. Any more high-density than that, that's down here by the Corps, I always told people south of some, some, uh, Bunker Lake Boulevard. I've stuck by that, we've voted on those things several times, we've stuck by that. That's how we keep our rural atmosphere, that's the reason I came here and everybody else came here, was so that I wasn't on top of my neighbor. We're trying to keep that rural atmosphere, but people want the urban amenities, they want restaurants, they want shops, we all want to go out to dinner, so that's how we do that, by drawing a line. So that's how we do that, by drawing a line, keeping it right there.
Thank you. I don't think you'll be too disappointed to know this is the last question before your closing statements, and this will go to Mr. Meth first. What priority do you place on the city's park system? And what one new priority would you have for its next five years?
We have something like 27 parks in this town. It's required every time we have a developer build a neighborhood, they have to provide open space, which is a good thing. And our public works people mow those yards. They stripe those fields for those kids to play soccer every, every summer. It's a wonderful resource that we have here in town. The park down here downtown, my opponent, Ms. Howell, has spooked about the park right here in the core. That's been ongoing for quite a while. Those apartment buildings, those people need a park, too, and we have to build that. So if we're going to do one thing, all of our residents tell us they would like to have the equipment upgraded sooner. We just dedicated a new, revamped park last night with new equipment, and they've been waiting for years and years. If we have to stay on that, our residents want this.
Thank you. And Ms. Howell, you're going to wrap it up. Again, the question is, what priority do you place on the city's park system? And what one new priority would you have for its next five years?
Thank you. So one of the biggest concerns I've heard from residents while outdoor knocking is that there are maintenance, maintenance issues with the trails. Also, some long-term residents are concerned about the building of new parks in the core when our quote "pocket parks" get very little attention. So the, the park my opponent mentioned last night got new equipment, but it's new-used equipment. So I think just, you know, putting more attention on those parks that are already in established neighborhoods is an important thing to me. As a city council member, I would like to reprioritize this. Also, I don't believe we should be building new parks when we're struggling to maintain those that we already have, and again, putting increased taxes on residents. I just have different priorities in that regard.
Thank you. And because the first question went to Ms. Howell, we'll start closing statements with Mr. Meth, and then Ms. Howell will wrap it up. So Mr. Meth, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you, Wes. Well, as you already found out, my name is Jeff Meth, and I'm your council member at large. I've been here 27 years, and I've truly enjoyed my first year on the council. You wouldn't believe how much I've learned about our city and its employees and how hard they work. I would like to continue this. I'm asking for your vote for the next four years, and we want to move this forward. We've got big projects in front of Ramsey. We have a public works building. We have a water treatment plant that we have to build because it's law. We have to get these things done. We all want to see Highway 10 fixed. We just secured $40 million from the federal government. That's a good start towards the $140 million it's going to cost to build it. We have to stay on top of this. I enjoy doing this work. Let's stay on top of these projects and make Ramsey better for our citizens. Thank you.
And thank you. And Ms. Howell?
If you are looking for a fiscally prudent councilperson, then I am your candidate. If you are looking for a council member who values public safety and believes we should fully fund our police and fire departments, then I am your candidate. If you are looking for a council member who values our constitution and believes upholding it is more than just an oath of office, then I am your candidate. If you are looking for a council member who believes it is the residents and the small business owners of our community who should set the direction for our city, then I am your candidate. If you are looking for a council member who believes residents should be heard and listened to, then I am your candidate. To learn more about me and for a more in-depth look at franchise fees, please visit my website at howelforramsey.com.